Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30 on the dot. Those that can rise, would you rise for the pledge of allegiance? Please place the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we do roll call, for those that don't know it, but there's a gentleman sitting next to JR on the right and between Bob Press is our new city manager, Ken Domer. Welcome. Ken comes with many years of managerial experience from cities throughout Orange County. I've met him multiple occasions, so his staff, and they were part of the process in selecting our new city manager. We're looking very forward to Ken's experience and in helping to continue to make Laverne the wonderful community that it is. And again, welcome, Ken. Now, your job starts, so roll call, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, for that. Councilmember Casha Fugida?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Lau?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Crosby?
Here.
Mayor Hepburn?
Here.
All present.
This is the time we set aside for announcements of upcoming community events. If anybody likes to come up, anything that's going on in the community, want to, do we have anybody online or no?
We didn't have anybody ask before.
You're never shy. Why was shy? Ms. Beauchamp, come on up.
Yeah, it's official if I don't write it down.
Just state your name, address.
Danita Beauchamp, 2516 Amherst. Tuesday, which is tomorrow, December 20th, LA County Board of Supervisors meeting at 9:00 AM. There are two items on the agenda pertaining to the SYTF and also, not necessarily pertaining to Laverne's camps, but also talking about the no longer using the pepper spray procedures, which ties into that. So if you're available, at least listen, but SYTF is still on the map, so tomorrow, 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. It's very important that, it's difficult to stay on these meetings because they last so long, and quite frankly, they never stay on schedule and they never stay on what their topic is supposed to be, but it's important to look for those little nuggets sometimes in a conversation that might affect our community, but as of now, not, but I think it's very important that we, that we can get online, you can listen only, and then you can also comment at the end, but I think it's very important. I will try to, it's just, it's two hours and it's crazy, but it's very important. Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. Anyone else like to speak on anything for announcements of upcoming events?
Tim, I have one.
Mr. Johnson.
The Laverne Church of the Brethren is having a concert on December 21st at 7:30 in the main sanctuary. They also had one this past Sunday. It was very well attended and it was beautiful music. I recommend that to anybody who's interested in some Christmas music. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else?
Yes, just, I think I did it, okay. Just a quick announcement that there is a Tri-Cities meeting on Wednesday as well at 5:00, and again, that one can be attended via Zoom if people would like to know what's going on with Tri-Cities.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Anyone else? We will close that portion. We go to presentation. Recognition of retiring City Attorney Robert Kress for his longtime dedication and service to the city of Laverne. Would you like to just sit there and laugh?
I'm trying to, I said living harm, and I'm like, what did I do?
I was going to go, we're going to go to In-N-Out.
I'm trying to get to the calendar. It's like, where's my calendar? Jesus.
After 32 years with the city of Laverne, City Attorney Kress will be retiring at the end of the year. He was appointed City Attorney on October 1st, 1990. Kress will also be honored by Council, and we don't want that one. You know, I had it, but, well, I'll give you a little blurb about Mr. Kress. Kress obtained his law degree, UCLA, in 1972 and started practicing law the same year. He has served the city of San Bernardino, Rosemead, and Laverne.
San Gabriel.
Oh. Tybo. City of San Gabriel, sorry about that, and Laverne. Additionally, we have created his commendation, which we presented already, but we'll also present a plaque to Mr. Kress. Again, I extend my congratulations to Bob and wish him the best in his retirement and enjoy the time spent with family and your cats. So I want to thank you, Bob. I do appreciate it. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Well, I think, thank you again. The council graciously had a reception for me earlier this evening, and I had more to say then, but it's been an incredible 32 years, and, you know, most of the time, I really enjoyed it. There were a few, a couple of times where it was a little rocky, but thank you very much. I always said, you didn't really have to take the advice as long as you kept paying for it. You did.
We don't owe you any more money, do we?
No, no.
We've paid up.
All paid up.
Audited demands, $8,600. Mr. Kress? We retire your name right here and also plaque, presented by the City of Laverne City Council, Robert Kress, in appreciation of 32 years of service representing the city of Laverne December 19, 2022. Thank you, sir.
And I'm, as you know, not leaving you guys in the lurch. Kim Barlow will be taking over as City Attorney, Kim.
Kim, right there. You can stand up, Kim. This is Kim.
A very experienced municipal attorney, executive partner in the firm. She'll do an excellent job for you. I have no concerns about that, and so, thanks for the long ride.
Thank you, Mr. Kress. Thank you. We have a consent calendar. Was anything pulled from the consent calendar?
Is there a chance to speak?
I'm sorry?
Is there a chance to speak?
Sure. Yeah, we'll open it up. We'll open it up for public comment, sure. Mr. Kendrick, you're always welcome at the podium, sir.
I will fill this out and give it to JR.
We know who you are. It's not a problem.
My name is Don Kendrick, for those that don't know who I am, and I had the privilege of meeting Bob in the mid-'90s, so he started in 1990, and he's worked 32 years, but the one thing that I've always enjoyed about Bob is, Bob is just going to sit there and not say anything until it's necessary that he says something, and then it's really wise, I think, to listen to what he says. The advice comes from over 175 years of your company's dialogue in over 10 cities of work in the San Gabriel Valley. That's very valuable to this city, and I think Laverne's guide, and Wendy's going to be able to probably understand this better than most because he is an attorney and understands risk and risk management and direction and how you get there and how you learn and so forth, and Bob, you've just, you've made this city as good as it can possibly be by your guidance and your love, and then you liked it so well, you moved here, and that is the ultimate compliment to our city, is that, yes, you are now one of us. So thank you very much for 32 years. Thank you for our friendship. Thank you for the guidance that you've given me and everybody else, and on behalf of the city of Laverne, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Kendrick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, fellow Laverne residents, I'm Rick Sandona. I've been in this community for over 30 years. I live at 4952 Villa Leesta, and I'm not here tonight with any complaints or tell you how to govern the fine city. I'm here as a citizen to recognize with you Bob Kress, our city attorney for 32 years, if you said, and nearly 50 years practicing law. It's not often that we take a moment to thank an attorney for his service, but most people don't realize the role of a city of attorney. A typical day might sound something like this for a city attorney. First in the office is a technical contract with a service provider to build a million-dollar fire engine and deliver it from out of state. Then the phone rings and it's the police department needing a rush meeting over a use-of-force incident that happened the night before. Then immediately following that, the planning department comes in with an emergency ordinance needed before the city council that night to make a change in the building code. Then the city manager comes in with a serious personnel problem that will most likely end up in litigation, and finally, the fellow city employee walks by his door and says, "Do you got a minute? I need some free advice. I'm having a problem with the neighbor." And then, of course, by 10 o'clock, he's got to be in court to represent some matter for the city. A typical day for an attorney, I'll say not. Most attorneys today are highly specialized. A law firm will take on just civil cases or criminal cases or divorce cases, but a city attorney has to be able to do all roads and all codes when the call comes for it. Yet this was a vocation that Bob selected. He asked for this, and he took it on for many years, and the city of Laverne is better off because you did come here and serve the citizens of this town. It's a difficult ball to balance sometimes when you're at a council meeting or a commission meeting and they're arguing about a topic, or the citizens are arguing about a topic, and you're sitting there nice and quiet, and you can see that ball going around the room, and all of a sudden, it lands in your lap, because you have to make the decision or voice the opinion that might make half the people happy and the other half of the people not so happy. I know, Bob, you never woke up in the morning thinking what you could do to hurt this town. Rather, you woke up and you tried to find positive solutions to difficult questions and positive solutions that were for the best of everyone. I know in your heart of hearts that you put Laverne first, and you put everything else below that, and the decisions and things you said and did were in the best interest of the city and the commissions and councils that you served. So tonight, I join all of you in saying goodbye to a friend and a champion of Laverne. I thank you, Bob, for caring when others gave up and doing your very best. I wish you a happy retirement, a Merry Christmas, and a great New Year's that opens a new door in your life, and may you enjoy it highly. Thank you, my friend. Thank you.
I was remiss. I want to, Mr. Duff back there just sitting quietly in the audience has been up here for a number of months to assist us on our transition, which was seamless and extremely well done, and I really appreciate it, and our council does too, and I know staff, your experience, your 40 years-plus experience as being city management, and it didn't go unnoticed. We really truly appreciate your help through this and helping us select Mr. Domer, and enjoy yourself in your next portion of your, well, I don't know if you're ever going to retire, you're just going to kind of like, honey, I got a job out in Timbuktu, I got to go be a city manager, but no, we really do appreciate it. You've been a godsend, I'll just say, so thank you very much. Thank you. With that, we move to consent calendar. Do we have anything pulled up consent calendar? Mr. Domer?
Mayor, there were some questions on the audited demands, but I don't know if that was pulled, and then there was a question on item number, yeah, D4. And we didn't want to pull D1. Which is the Resolution 2285, and we're pulling?
2285 or 2285?
Yeah, so D4, that came in from a resident, and then we are pulling D1, Resolution 2282.
Yeah, that's the sewer connection. Okay, so 22, we're pulling 2285?
Yes, one.
This, sir? Mutual aid for this one?
No, it's the joint resolution on the sewer district tax rate area.
We got that one.
Okay. So 2282 and 2285, correct?
Correct. And then just confirm? Yes. And then just confirm that nobody wanted to ask any further questions about the audited demands?
I just, if there's nothing else, unless they?
Those were answered by the finance director, so.
I think I talked to Kristy before the meeting. She said they were pretty much answered.
Yes.
So we're good with that.
So we're good with that.
Okay, so shall we, shall we talk about these first, or we want to do the, you want to talk about this first, then we'll go back to, we'll approve the consent calendar? Because I think we want to talk about the MOU, is that correct? JR, please, go right ahead, JR.
Thank you, Mayor. I had asked for this item to be pulled. Typically, the MOUs are a part of our consent calendar, but we have not had a multi-year agreement for several years with our fire association, so thought it was timely to discuss, to bring it off the consent calendar to celebrate the accomplishment that we've done. We had productive and very good communication with the negotiators on the association side, and their strong leadership helped us come to a four-year agreement. That's, that's, that's part of a trend that we are moving forward in a positive direction, and so wanted to point that out tonight.
How many years?
Four years. And the Fire Association President, Andy Glaze, is also on and mentioned that he would like to say a few words, so I'll try to bring him into the room as well.
Okay. These cookies are driving me crazy. You'll never know that I was eating them. Thank you.
Go ahead, Andy.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Andy Glaze, and I'm the Laverne Firefighters Association President. I wanted to thank City Council, JR, and our negotiators for working together on our new contract. We are very happy to have a finalized contract that addresses the retention and recruitment issues that we have been dealing with for years and provides the security of a four-year contract. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
I just want to say that this took quite a bit of work, but we're in a much better place than we were a number of years ago when we couldn't even get a one-year contract. A lot of changes in the fire department with Chief Nigg, Deputy Fire Chief Coney, we've got fire marshals, we've got ambulance programs, AO operators, we've got all this stuff now in place, but it really, and our mutual aid agreement, which, automatic aid agreement, actually, and we're in such a better shape than we ever have been, and I look forward, as JR said, the trend, multi-year contracts, because as a council, we're constantly working on contracts for different labor groups, and it's very difficult for staff and also for us, because you just, you never, never stop to kind of smell the roses and look ahead to our community, and it's difficult. We have to make sure that our employees have a contract in place, and it never gives us a chance to just kind of step back, and now this gives us the chance with a four-year contract that's going to be good for our fire department, good for our employees, and hopefully it sets a pace for our other employee groups to give us a multi-year contract, so. And I appreciate staff for the hard work they did on it. The fire department, they all came together, the negotiations went extremely well, and our council, I know that councilmember Lau and myself met with the fire department just to see what their issues were during the negotiations, and I think we're getting a trend with that, to see where our employee groups understand that council's with them, not that we're making any decisions, we bring it back to staff and figure if we can make this work, and it worked out extremely well. So I appreciate my council, appreciate Councilmember Lau, and also the fire department. It was a much different situation this time. It was discussion, not craziness, and not the disruption that we've had over the number of years with the fire department. It's just streamlined now, and we really appreciate that. Council, any comments? There we go. Thank you. We'll close that one, and then we can, this particular one, Resolution 2282, not that one, sorry, 2285, someone pulled that, wanted to speak on that?
Good evening.
Yeah, let's open up a public comment on that one. I can probably answer it for you also.
It's not really a quite, well, okay.
Go ahead.
According to the minutes for the LA County Board of Sanitation for District 21, Annexation 769 was approved, and it discusses the 50 proposed attached townhomes, the Brandywine Project on Fruit Street, but if I remember correctly, and it could just be very specifics, I know that the eight units that are scheduled to be completed on Walnut Street was also part of that. Now, I realize going back into older Agenda Minutes, they had their own separate resolution numbers, so I don't know if that's part of the reason why, but why we're not, why was the eight units on Walnut not included as part of the annexation if it was part of the original project for Fruit Street? And it could be as simple as because it has a separate resolution or?
Because of the sewer connection, and I was part of that vote, because I'm on the sanitation district 21. Actually, I made the motion, and basically what that does is a sewer connection, and it has nothing to do with the Walnut property. That's a whole different issue, and I haven't seen anything on the Walnut property, so as far as the resolution numbers, but the 50-town home stands on its own resolution. It's a $2,000 fee for sewer connection with the 50 units, so really, that's all it is. And the ones down on Walnut is a totally separate area, so it has to do just specifically with that area.
Okay, so it's not like district pertaining to certain, you know, like an area, like district for the voting type of a situation?
No.
Because I was going to also then ask if this is including the 50-town homes on Fruit, why are we not including the units on Amherst Street? But I realize that they have not started building yet, so I know they're in a different timeframe than, than the Brandywine Project, so I just needed a little bit of clarification for that.
And that's why, that's a separate issue, and Brandywine's a separate issue, and the sewer connection fee, it's standard, you have to have that in order to get into sanitation district.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions on this item, on 2285? I'll close the public comment, bring it up to the dais. Mayor Pro Tim Crosby?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second, please.
Second.
All is in favor. Code, please. Motion carries. We will wait to see those little lights up there. Look at that. Okay. Are we actually, we're on public comments. We have one speaker card for public comment on item number seven, is that correct, Mr. Sandona, or did you already? You're already done? Well, we'll just put this one away. Public comment.
I wanted to take a moment to thank everybody that participated or volunteered or donated money to the wreaths across America. This year was one of the most successful years that we had. Caitlin King, who was the Regent for the Covina Chapter of Wreath Across America, she was the ceremony keynote speaker, emcee, she really just did a phenomenal job, and I also like to thank Cynthia Gabeldon, as Mayor did at that ceremony as well, but not only did they have enough money to purchase wreaths for everybody at the Laverne Cemetery, but they had leftovers that they were going to disperse to other cemeteries that had a shortfall. So that really says a lot about our residents and the love and the respect and honoring our veterans, which is a very important tradition in our city, and also Mr. Councilmember Johnson and Casha Fugida were also there, and I appreciate that, and hopefully in the future, I know it's Christmas time and it's that busy time of year, but I would like to see all of our council attend this in the future, but I wanted to say thank you again to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchamp. Anyone else on public comment? Mr. Bowen?
My name is Rick Bowen. Been a resident here for 38 years. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, and our new city manager, Kenneth Domer. I welcome you and look forward to great things. I do also want to acknowledge Jeff, or Jesse Duff, who apparently has done a great job as in the interim in bringing this city together, which I really appreciate. Thank you. I just want to say that, great move getting firefighters finally after five years of really tumultuous activities, it's nice to see the city starting to pull together. I also want to say that with tonight's departure of the city manager, or the city attorney, Laverne has finally turned away from the old guard that's run this city for well over 30 years. Hopefully, respect for our residents and transparency, pardon me, and true transparency will again be the hallmark of this city. I won't read the rest of it out of courtesy. In parting, I just want to steal a line from Rocky II and look up there in a camera and say, "Yo, Hugh, you did it." I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a great Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on public comment? We're going to close it down. Anybody online?
No.
We'll bring it up to the dais. Council, who'd like to start?
I'll start.
I won't take long, because I, I know.
You've got three minutes. Three minutes, sir.
Well, Mr. Kress?
Take all the time you need, sir.
Good luck to you. I know where you live, so I'll be knocking on your door for continued free legal advice like you promised me.
You're looking for the free beer.
Yes, I'm looking for the free beer.
Come on, don't lie.
It's okay. It's a tough job, and unfortunately, I've only had the pleasure of serving here with you for a short amount of time, though I've known you for a longer time. God bless you and your family. You know, it's always a tough job, you're not going to make everybody happy, you're not going to make, and you're going to make a lot of people sad. It is what it is, right? And I remember your barcode, code number, which I promise I won't use. It was like a four-digit number. I don't think anybody has that four-digit, but hey, that means experience, and I found out you're a UCLA Bruin fan, so I'll promise not to have a bunch of USC Trojans running around in front of your house, but.
And to UCLA, if you were a California resident, it was free.
God. God bless America. God bless America. And Mr. Jess Duff, I always call you Jeff, because I can never remember if it was Jess or Jeff, but regardless, I'm always screaming at you. Congratulations on another great, successful retirement, right? Hey, you're just moving forward. It just shows the testament to your experience and your hard work, so thank you so much again, and hopefully we can continue to make our city great again, and I appreciate you all, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Cash. Councilmember Johnson?
I also wanted to recognize Jess. I really appreciate the service that you've provided us. Others have said it's been a calming effect, and I know that's your personality. We'd expect nothing less, but you did a good job, and I appreciate it, and we all appreciate it. The community appreciates what's happened since you took off, took control. I do want to remind everybody, the church is having a concert Wednesday evening, 7:30, is that correct? I'm looking at my wife because she sings in the choir.
The boss. You will mention it five times, and it will be five times that you will mention it.
When was that again?
That is Wednesday at 7:30.
Wednesday, 7:30.
Church of the Brethren. That is Wednesday at 7:30, Church of the Brethren. And it's a wonderful concert. They just had one on Saturday.
Sunday.
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 Sunday. And so this is the extension of this one, and it's wonderful. And refreshments will be served.
Afterwards. That's all I have this time, Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember Lau?
I just wanted to echo, thank you, Jess, for helping us out and during this transition, very much appreciated. So I hope you get to enjoy retirement for real this time. And thank you, Bob, for being our city attorney. I know to your 50, I've got 20 years. So I've got a ways to go before I catch up, because my barcode is definitely more numbers. But enjoy your retirement. Welcome, Mr. Domer. Hopefully, it'll be a good transition for you and that we don't scare you away. But to everyone, thank you so much for a great year. Appreciate the cookies. These look amazing. So I'm super excited about that. Thank you. But also, just thank you for your participation and your engagement. It takes everyone in the city to make this a great place. So appreciate you. Please make time to spend time with your family and your friends this holiday. It's already going to be Christmas. Hanukkah just started. This year has whipped by so, so fast. So enjoy the small moments, because those are the things that are the big moments later on. So enjoy, be kind, and hope everybody is pretty stress-free leading up to the festivities.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Mayor Pro Tem Crosby?
One push. I just want to Merry Christmas, Happy Second Night of Hanukkah tonight. And the last week, I got this in the mail, and I just brought a smile to my face. It's the City of Laverne Recreation. It's back. And because of COVID, it wasn't sent out before. So it's back, and it has all... You should all then received it at your house. If it hasn't come, it's going to be coming. And look at the great kids and their smiles on there.
Whose kids are those?
So just want to thank Yvonne and her happy, happy group back that's doing recreation, and really look forward to all of the events that you are putting on. So this is great news. And if you want to volunteer for Day of Christmas and running behind and handing out stuff, you can go to our... Is it on our websites? Okay. At Christmas morning, please come out and help. We still love to have volunteers to go out and do it. At 6:00 AM, we meet here in the community center. We get out at the streets by 7:00. And you're usually done before 1:00, 2:00 o'clock.
On Mondays.
And then you can spend the rest of the time, Christmas, with your family, so. Candy's got to get out. Come out and volunteer, but Happy Holidays for everybody.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Crosby. Today, at... It was 8:30. The Fire Department's been running a Sparkle Up toy drive. And I want to thank Councilmember Cash for getting some amazing donors, along with Laverne Brewery and also Crazy Bear Bikes. And there was over 30 red kids' bicycles, and I don't know how many hundreds and hundreds of toys. And they all, the Fire Department came over, and basically, they drove them over. Mr. Johnson in his truck, Cash in his truck, and Laverne Brewery, and also Crazy Bear drove the bikes over to the fire station. And then the Fire Department came over to Hillcrest, where they put them in their main hall room. And then tomorrow, they'll go out to where they need to go for the kids and stuff. So I want to thank you. It was amazing, incredible. The staff at Hillcrest were riding the bikes inside of the trucks. They're just like... But anyway, thank you very much. That was very generous of you, Fire Department. Thank you, you guys. It was amazing. The staff was amazing. All of your firefighters and all your staff did an incredible job, and I really thank you. And Laverne was quiet at that time. They didn't have any calls, thank God. We had 90% of the staff, I think, over there. But thank you, it was incredible. I want to thank Jess again. I want to thank Bob for your service. I want to welcome Ken. I also want to thank staff for this last year or two. It's been a definite transition. We've all worked very hard. I want to thank my council especially for sticking with me and working together as a team, as we all did. And we're in a much better place now. And I want to absolutely thank our residents. Without our residents and people that put the time out and stuck their necks out between Afaba Page, between the Fire Department, between all the issues in the city we're facing over the last number of years, we are in a much better place. And I look forward to next year as just a new beginning. And I look forward to communication, transparency. And I can't thank you all enough. It really took a village to kind of move things forward. But I want to say that Afaba Page, I think, was a crowning glory for all of our residents to put together, because that was a major issue we were facing that could have changed the dynamics of our community and destroyed it, actually. And I think that put us all together, everybody thinking in the same direction. We're not always going to agree on everything, but we're in a much better direction. We've got great management now. We've got great staff, and I look forward to this next year. I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year. And welcome, Ms. Barlow. I look forward to sitting on the dais again with you. We were on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments together, and she was the attorney at the time, and that was a few years ago. But I really appreciate Bob is leaving us in very good shoes. Jess is leaving us in very good shoes. And I look forward to next year. And again, I thank my council. It's been a hell of a year, and I look forward to next year. So with that, our next regular scheduled meeting... Can you believe it? It's seven after seven, my God. We will not be having a meeting on January 3rd. That's canceled. And due to the city hall being closed on Monday, January 16th, in observance of a legal holiday, the next regular meeting of the Laverne City Council is scheduled for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. I want to thank my wives, my wives. Patty, I didn't mean that. I was thinking of all the council. I want to thank my wife and everybody's wives that... That was a good one. That allow us, that allow... Let me finish my train of thought. That allow us to do this. I really do appreciate it. Thank you. I'm probably turning red as a bee. Patty, I love you. Anyway, thank you for our wives that allow us to do this and our partners to be able to let us do this and spend this kind of time, because we really all do truly love this city. So anyway, everyone, have a great holiday. And thank you for the cookies. Thank you. We are adjourned at... Will you stop? Oh, Joe. Joe, yes, please. Yes, you can. Come on up. Cookie lady. I got you, huh?
I can't let this end without issuing a big thank you to everyone who is on their hands and knees on my behalf in the parking lot looking for my keys, even though I said I'm sure I lost them in the ladies' room. And sure enough, the next day, the... They had been turned in, but the office was closed. So I appreciate all the help from everyone and from this 84-year-old that used to laugh at funny old ladies. I'm now one of them. Thank you.
I want to thank the staff, because we were looking all over high and low for them. And then Councilmember Cash took her back to Kathy's house. Then they found the keys in her house, a spare set. So Kathy came back and then drove her to Glendora. So it was like one of those nights where, you know, the calamity of errors just went on. But anyway, that's the kind of community we live in. That's the kind of love we have for everybody, so it's a good thing. So we are going to adjourn tonight, 7:09 PM.